We'll call the Owatonna City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, September 1st. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Okerberg.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
And Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Coats.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the regardless of which is the chance, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight for our first council meeting just before school starts, I guess. And we do have some rearrangement of the agenda, but I don't remember if we have anything added to that, do we?
The one thing that we added was the item on consent for the Arrowmark service agreement.
That's correct, yes. With that addition, look for a motion to approve as corrected.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve as corrected. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we will move on to the public hearing, annexation of property at 124 32nd Avenue Southwest, and we'll go to Troy.
Good evening. Rodney Peterson, the owner of 124 32nd Avenue Southwest, is requesting annexation of his property in order to connect the city sewer and water. He's right on the corner of Bridge Street and 32nd Avenue. The property is approximately one and a quarter acres. It is proposed to be zoned I-1 light industrial municipal sewer and water are currently available along 32nd Avenue. With this annexation, the township portion of the taxes is $105.81 annually. Under our annexation agreement, the city would be required to reimburse the township two and a half years of taxes, which would amount to $264.53. The township did approve this annexation request at their last meeting, and staff would recommend approval of the annexation request with council with the first reading of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you. And with that, at 7:02, we'll open it up for public hearing. If anyone wants to speak on this issue, please step forward to the mic and sign in. Seeing none, we'll look for motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Nate Dodson to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now it is the council's chance to discuss this. Is there any questions by the council? Seeing none, look for motion to...
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved.
This is actually an ordinance, so we do need to... It's a proposed ordinance for the annexation.
Okay, well, then we will ask for roll call.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Okerberg.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Thank you. And now we will move on to financial report, and I'll ask councilmember Schultz to read the financial report.
Okay. Expenditures presented for approval tonight are as follows. Checks over $20,000 are $33,848 to Businessware Solutions for 30 PC replacements and a video server, $270,208 to Crane Creek Asphalt, of which $16,891 is for hot mix, and $253,317 is going toward the 2015 state aid overlay projects. $93,482 to Henry G. Miggs for road oil, $338,719 to Hazelton Construction for 2015 street and utility projects, $81,150 to James Brothers Construction for the North Gate contamination removal, $279,749 to James Brothers Construction for the LaMond Road and Mineral Springs Parkway projects, $22,570 to the Owatonna Area Chamber of Commerce for the 95% July lodging tax, $42,261 to Viricon for the TIF agreement. Add to that other expenditures of $183,926 brings one total expenditures presented for approval tonight of $1,345,916.89.
Thank you, Greg. You've all heard the report. Do you have a question?
Pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Move on to the consent agenda items, which are requests for permits, special event permits, et cetera, minutes of meetings, reports, et cetera, all grouped into one motion, and what is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on to action items, we will start with 3.3.1 Resolution 906315 authorize Daniel A. McIntosh to sign master subscriber agreement with Minnesota, and we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. The Steel Counties Attorney's Office acts as our city prosecutor and also the Police Department, Keith Hiller, are requesting access to the state court document system to be able to print filed documents when needed. And as a result, the state of Minnesota requires this master subscriber agreement be approved by the council by resolution. So there is no budget impact, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. And with that, we'll look at the first one, which would be for the county attorney, and what is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any discussion at this point? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now moving on to 3.3.2 Resolution 7115 to authorize Keith Hiller to sign master subscriber agreement. What is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do you have a second to that? Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to Resolution 64-15, sale of property to LWO Limited Partnership, 114 in the 100 block of Rose Street West. Troy.
So as part of our North Gate project, we were selling the property to LWO Properties. We did have closing last week. The council approved it, but we didn't do it by resolution. The lenders entitled company at the closing would like to have as a follow-up a resolution on the sale of that. So we're presented with a resolution for the sale of the property, which the council has already approved.
Thank you, Troy. And what is the council's wishes here?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you. Moving on to 3.3.4 Resolution 65-15, parking restriction on Academy Street East, and this will go to Kyle.
Good evening. At the request of St. Mary's School, they're moving to Pillsbury property and would like to designate approximately 200 feet of Academy east of Grove as a bus parking zone. And then additionally, we met with them today, and we'd like to make a small change to this. We would like to make Academy no parking from Grove back to the first entrance into Pillsbury. So we felt that with the buses parking along there, there's about three parking spots. It would probably cause more conflict than it would save us, and feel that those should be eliminated. So I'd like to amend the... To include no parking from Grove back to that first entrance to Pillsbury. It'll be 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council?
Kyle, are you... I'm looking at the photo here, and are you talking about just directly to the right of that parking lot? I guess I'm looking at the photo, and just to the left, there's parking for one there. And would we be better off to just eliminate that one also? Because that's in between two driveways.
You mean in that internal parking lot?
Correct, yes.
Between the two buildings? There are two spots there. I guess at this time, I'd recommend leaving those, because we've eliminated quite a number of spots that are typically used by the high school, so I'd recommend leaving them.
Anything else? Any other questions? What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving down to 3.3.5 Resolution 66-15, proposed 2016 levy, and this will go to Chris.
All right, I'll start us out here. We began our official budget season for 2016 with this action tonight, asking the council to adopt a preliminary levy. We're starting our departmental reviews with the council. We heard from Community Development and the Police Department this evening, and then we're going to go through the rest of the departments through the season. We've spent a lot of time putting this proposed budget together, and we would ask you to consider that very carefully, and I'm going to throw it back over to Rhonda for some more of the specifics.
Okay. Each year annually, the council is required to adopt proposed budget. For the city, the date is September 30th. For the EDA and HRA, it's September 15th. The city is also required to schedule the date to have the public hearing in December to present the budget to the public, and this year that will be on December 1st at 6 o'clock. The county assessor has given us an early estimate that our capacity has increased by 2.9%, and the levy that we're asking you to adopt tonight for the proposed levy is a 5% increase. This includes an increase for the EDA of $10,000 and an increase for the HRA of $15,000. There are actually three resolutions included. The first one is to adopt the proposed levy for the city. The second one is to adopt the proposed levy for the HRA, and then the third one is just adopting the proposed budget. So staff would recommend you adopting all these resolutions.
Thank you, Rhonda. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, what is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Which one? First one?
First one.
The first one would be the Resolution 66-15 to making proposal levy of taxes for 2016. You motion to approve that one?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve Process 16, proposed 16 levy. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there?
Les?
Yes.
The only other thing I would add, I do appreciate the work Chris and Rhonda have done on this. 5% is quite a bit more than what we have done the past few years, but there are some unknowns out there. Hopefully, when we get closer to the end of the year and approve the final budget, we can pare that down a little bit, given all the rest of the things that are happening with the school and the county. But I do appreciate the work you've done on it, and see you right up at the end of the year.
Great.
Just for the record, this is a maximum amount. We can always reduce it. We can't increase it, but as we fine tune things, it can be worked down.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This one has been approved. Now we will move on to Resolution 67-15, proposed HRA 2016 levy, and what is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve Resolution 67-15.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve that. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving down to Resolution 68-15, proposed 2016 budget, what is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on down to Resolution 69-15, Vision Processing Incorporation, Job Z, opt-out, and that, we go to Troy.
Kiri has recently purchased Vision Processing Technologies, which has facilities in Litchfield as well as Owatonna. Kiri has made the decision to close the Litchfield facility and move 30 jobs to the Owatonna facility before the end of the year. The Owatonna facility is currently in a Job Z program. In the Job Z agreement with Owatonna states the company would keep a certain number of jobs in Litchfield. Since the company does not plan to keep those jobs in Litchfield through the end of the year, they are choosing to opt out of that Job Z program. By opting out of the program, the company avoids defaulting on their agreement with the city of Owatonna. In 2013, a portion of the property was removed from the Job Z program to access tax increment financing for a 15,000 square foot addition onto the building. This request is to remove the remaining portion of the property from the Job Z program. The Job Z program is scheduled to end at the end of this year, December 31st. Under the program, properties do not have to pay property taxes, among other benefits. By opting out of the Job Z program early, the company must pay real estate taxes from the time the opt-out is accepted until the end of the year. This results in additional tax base for the city, as well as the reasoning for them doing it is bringing 30 jobs. So staff recommends approval of the adoption of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. And now we move on to Resolution 70-15, Final Plaid of Festival Addition, and that we will go back to Troy.
Chad Lang is requesting approval of a revised final plaid. The plaid was changed since the original approval slightly. The previous plaid contained a long cul-de-sac extending to the north called Festival Place. This has been eliminated and replaced with the utility easement for the first 150 feet. The applicant will construct a public sanitary sewer main to the east and extension of the water main into the utility easement. The construction plans have not changed since the original plant, only the removal of the proposed right-of-way for the cul-de-sac. And due to the uncertainty of the future of lot two, the applicant feels this provides more options for them. They don't have a user yet for the second lot. A cul-de-sac may not be needed if someone buys the full lot number two, and therefore a cul-de-sac wouldn't be needed. So they felt it was probably more important to plaid it, to get Simpa to do their power plant on Lot One without committing too far into Lot Two with that cul-de-sac. There would not be any budget impact to the city's general budget. The public improvements would all be completed by the developers. So staff recommends approval of the resolution approving the revised final plaid of festival addition.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Good luck with that. Moving on to contracts and agreements, 3.4.3 Verizon AVL Automatic Vehicle Locating Trial Program, and this will go to Kyle.
Good evening. We've been in discussions with Verizon about automatic vehicle locating equipment. This is GPS equipment that operates through the cellular network. It provides us with information. For example, we can tell if the broom is up or down on the sweeper. It tracks the location, and it also provides us with a fleet management, which would integrate with our fuel management system. They've offered to allow us to try it for 60 days, so we thought that trying it and seeing if we could optimize routing for the sweepers during the fall leaf cleanup would be a good trial. So that's what we're proposing to do, and we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council?
Kyle, question. Should we choose to purchase these units at a future date? Any idea what the cost is per unit?
The installation is around $100 to $110 per unit. Kind of depends on what, you know, the electronics on it, on the piece of equipment are. And then the monthly cost is about $19 per unit. So if we did 25 units with Public Works, we'd have about $2,500 initial investment, and then, you know, around $500 a month of ongoing costs. We could probably recover the 500 just in reduced idling time on the equipment.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving down to 3.4.4 Development Agreement with Festival Addition, and that we go back to Troy.
So attached is the development agreement for Festival Addition. As I said before, all public improvements would be completed by the developer in conjunction with the construction on Lot One. This agreement will lay out the expectations for each lot, the developer as well as the city, and what is expected and when. The agreement has been agreed upon by the city attorney, the developer's attorney, as well as city staff and the developer, and this agreement would be recorded with the plaid. Again, no budgetary impact, as the public improvements would be done by the developer, and staff recommends approval of the development agreement.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving down to miscellaneous items, change the date of the first council meeting in November. Chris.
The Owatonna School District has filed for a special election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd. This is the first Tuesday of the month, which is our normal meeting date. The statute, state statute prohibits us from a public meeting on the date of election. And historically, what we've done is change it to the Monday prior. You can change it to whichever date you prefer, but that's what we've historically done, and that would be November 2nd. There's really no budget impact, and staff would recommend approval, changing the meeting date to whichever date you prefer.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve, and that would be for the Monday before.
Right, Monday, November 2nd.
November 2nd.
Second.
Motion by Nate to approve for November 2nd. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Greg Schultz.
For the second.
Oh, for the second. Okay. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now moving down to 3.5.4 Deer Management for 2015, and this will go to Chris.
Well, I think we'll go to Corky. He's going to give you an overview of what we're proposing here.
Okay, well, this is the second year for the deer hunt, and Keith has written the memorandum for us. Again, we're involved with the police department in conjunction with this, so pretty much the same as last year with a few changes. This year, we've extended it one week longer, going to 12/20 this year. We felt that was okay. We're... Of course, it'll probably snow and freeze up early, and we'll be wishing we maybe hadn't, but I think we'll be okay with that. We've also added the earn a buck, that after one doe is shot, the hunter can now shoot a buck, and then continue to shoot until they reach their limit of five, or they can shoot four and then take the buck, but they'd have a total of five, including the buck. That'll be the second change. The other change is we've got 30 permits this year instead of 15 we've asked for, and because of that, we can only let 15 hunters out at a time because of the land, DNR's regulations on how many hunters per acre that can hunt. And so the committee has not met yet their meeting. The park board met last night, and they were more in favor of offering out 30 permits and splitting the season. The reason that there was consideration that the committee might have, and mainly the committee is Mary Jo Knudsen from our department, Lynn Walters from our department, Kyle Ackerman are the main part of the committee, and they'll talk about this more. There's advantages and disadvantages to it. We wanted to have the open permit, so if a hunter wanted to quit early, that he could give up his permit to somebody else, and there'd be 15 others available. But if he quits, we can take that other hunter that chose the second season to come up and start early if he'd like to. And so the park board thought last night would be to split the season into two seasons, push out 30 permits, and it'll be a random draw with the first hunter chosen choosing the location and the date they would hunt, and that would work its way down the line through the 30 hunters. Other than that, all the other regulations are the same, and at the end, it does follow DNR regulations. From a resident, we had a good recommendation. We're going to take this to the committee as well, is that we're going to ask the hunters to call in each day as they hunt, when they hunt, and give us a number count of deer that they've seen out there, just so we get a little better handle of how many deer are really out there. And of course, you know, it might be the same deer the second day or not, but at least we'll have a little bit better count on what we're seeing out there. And so we're going to ask the hunters to do that, who are, have all been very good and working with us, and we're sure that's not going to be a problem. So tonight, we're just asking for the approval. The permits are starting actually to come in today, but they wouldn't be officially approved until your council's approval tonight, so that's what we're asking for.
Thank you, Corky. Any questions from the council?
Did you discuss the parks that you'd be hunting in? The only negative feedback I had last year was Mineral Springs Park, because it's a heavily populated park.
Yes, it's your choice. There are deer in Mineral Springs Park. Where we place that one hunter in that location, because it is tight quarters out there, is completely out of the residential area. It's on the backside of the park on a gully that comes up out of there. It's a safe area to hunt. Wasn't very successful last year out there, but it's your call, but there is deer there. We know of eight deer for sure that are living in Brooktree Golf Course that travel through Mineral Springs Park, and so they are there. We only put one hunter out there at a time. So it's your call. We, like I say, the location is very safe, and so...
Do you happen to off the top of your head what the total number of applicants were last year?
I should know the exact number. It's high 60s.
Say Kyle looks like he knows?
98.
I was told 60, high 60s. 98. Okay. Holy cow.
Corky, all the stand locations will be approved by the city and marked with GPS or something?
Yeah, all marked with GPS, and all the neighbors will get those locations with Kyle and Lynn Walters from the Park and Rec staff. Do GPS locate all those stands?
Corky, in regards to if a hunter chooses, gets one and leaves, will you also do that on the back end if someone on the second season chooses he got his one or two, can someone from the first session come in and do that?
Right. We would go in priority area of draw with that, and so the first hunter, number one picked, and he shot one deer, and he didn't get another deer. And the second season went out, and there was an open spot. Then we'd flip back to that person and say, we have an open spot. You can go back.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, I've just got a comment. We had a park board meeting last night at south end of Lake Colmire, and as I'm pulling up, there were five deer sitting in Kaplan's woods, and right before the meeting started, two of them took off heading north. I think they were using our trail system, and so they're taking advantage of that. I'm seeing more deer track on my property down there as well, and I've got nothing but people telling me to do it again this year, so...
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Corky?
Yep.
Excuse me.